...and, excuse me, our regular meeting of the Mayor and City Council, the City of Fort Allen, is now, today is Wednesday, August 15th, 2024. The council chamber, which is now five thirty one. Each person must decide before entering the chamber which agenda item they wish to comment on. If they are not seated in the chamber when the agenda item is heard, they will be notified by an officer to enter the council chamber to address that into the act. Agenda, please silence all electronic devices. Item number one, call a order. Item number two, play the lead. Everybody.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the Republic of the United States, my nation and my home.
Mr. Brown. Item number three.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Gordon?
Here.
Ms. Hubble?
Here.
Ms. Lacy? Mr. Revere?
Here.
All right, item number... Item number four, approval of minutes of the regular meetings of July 10th, 2024.
Make a motion to approve meeting this day correction.
All right, we have, uh, I'm sorry, which one? I heard both y'all. Who do we hand, Michelle Lee?
Oh, you done man, go to who do.
I'll say.
All right, so, Michelle Lee, motion accepted. Any objection? Vote, uh, vote.
Mr. Brown? Gordon?
Yes.
Ms. Hubble?
Yes.
Ms. Lacy? Yes. Mr. Revere?
Yes.
All right, we have, uh, many who must make to the agenda.
Uh, yes, council members, uh, the mayor informing, uh, that, uh, an agenda item, uh, needs to be added. Uh, this is an agenda item that was discussed last week at the committee, uh, to add an item to the agenda authorizing the mayor to sign the engagement letter with the auditors. Uh, this year, the city will go through three audits, the, uh, the financial audit, uh, the audit for the state line of reform procedures, and a, um, audit, um, of the market funds usage, so three, three audits this year. And again, this is just an addition, uh, agenda item, uh, to give the mayor the authority to go ahead and sign that contract with the auditor.
Motion, uh, who?
Like, if this is an agenda, uh, will need unanimous consent.
Yeah. All right, we got a motion, and second, moving motion, it's her, the second.
Okay, ready to vote? Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Gordon?
Yes.
Ms. Hubble?
Yes.
Ms. Lacy? Yes.
All right, before we start, uh, giving my reading, Michelle Lee, uh, can't remind y'all, we would like to take a moment aside, especially everybody, uh, familiar with this city, so, yeah, just take a read on that.
Mm-hmm.
All right.
Who's two?
So, uh...
Who's willing to make this decision?
Again, so we're just gonna make it five P.
Or five point one.
All right, so, number five, public comments. Comments from the public are allowed in accordance with Louisiana, uh, revised statute, quarter to eleven, section two, dash thirty-four, and specifically limited to an agenda item to be considered during the meeting, three minutes per person and fifteen minutes per topic. And, uh, agenda, agenda item five point one.
Okay, council members, uh, every year, the city is required to go through its financial audits, uh, and I believe this is the same group that has done the audits the last few years, and this is just the, the authorization for the mayor to sign the engagement letter with the auditor.
Second. All right. Motion by Mr. Revere, second by Mr. Hubble. Vote.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Gordon?
Yes.
Ms. Hubble?
Yes.
Ms. Lacy? Yes. Mr. Revere?
Yes.
Move ahead.
All right, item number six, consider bringing in a contractor to operate the water and gas department while Aaron Lanes was covered from surgery.
Make that motion.
I'll say.
He did not leave anything, I know he told me that there were two people that he was going to have a conversation with, um, that was interested and had presented some information, but he did not leave you.
So, do y'all wanna vote on this tonight, or postpone it, or what?
Uh, how long, Mr. Aaron, now he could be out?
About eight weeks.
Yes, I mean, at least, in my...
You can vote on a day, come back and then, uh, bring back whoever you wanna decide on.
Okay, if anything, perhaps you're gonna, you know, to take some action tonight, just authorize the mayor to, to consult, yeah, well, consult with potential vendors and then bring, you know...
I want some numbers, what is gonna call, you know?
But I think we're just gonna make the motion for him to just get the piece, or?
Yeah, just getting, getting for approval to get prices.
Yeah, so, because I make the special motion for, um, right.
'Cause, I mean, the way the agenda item was worded, it says bring it in.
Bring it in, oh, yeah.
Without getting, uh...
We did have to do a counter, um, motion?
A substitute motion.
Well, what's, what's the motion on the floor? We don't have a motion on the floor yet.
I made the motion to accept the, the mayor to bring in that contract.
Right, so she made a motion.
But we can...
I, I thought you wanted him just to get prices.
Yeah, but I, I thought it was too, because we don't have it, and he did say he was gonna give it before us tonight, but of course, he's not here.
Yeah.
So, but we can...
It's all about the wording of the agenda item itself.
So, we have to do a substitute motion?
No, I, I don't think, you know, because there is, you know, we gotta have the, uh, you only need a substitute motion once there's a pending motion on the floor. The agenda item is not a motion, it's just the, you know, the agenda item, the topic to be discussed. So, I mean, if the motion is a motion to authorize the mayor to, you know, get prices for potential vendors and bring back the council.
Yeah, that's what, that's what I'm saying, like you said.
That's the motion.
It's the agreement of being an independent contractor, but not that we approved it.
Y'all are not ready to...
Yeah, we kept the information.
Right.
So, that was the motion?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That was second. Mr. Revere, second. I mean, motion?
I made the motion.
Ms. Gordon?
Ms. Gordon, motion, Mr. Revere, second. Vote.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Gordon?
Yes.
Ms. Hubble?
Yes.
Ms. Lacy? Yes. Mr. Revere?
Yes.
All right, item number seven. Seven, consider approving a pay application to M-Track in an amount of thirty thousand, eight hundred and sixty dollars and seventy-five cents for work done on the Phase Seven Road project. Thank you, Mr. Thomas.
Yeah, thank y'all. Um, these are, uh, I guess there's a few in a row that, uh, presented at the committee meeting. Uh, this particular one is the M-Track, uh, their pay request before, um, uh, their retainage. So, uh, we recommend that y'all, you know, approve that pay request in the amount of thirty thousand, eight hundred and sixty dollars and seventy-five cents.
Move.
Seven.
Motion by Mr. Revere.
Seven.
Second by Mr. Hubble.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Gordon?
Yes.
Ms. Hubble?
Yes.
Ms. Lacy? Yes. Mr. Revere?
Yes.
What's your fastest?
All right, number eight, consider approving substantial completion for the Phase Seven Road project with M-Track to come.
Uh, yes, and, uh, this is essentially, they are substantially complete, and this just allows them to, uh, take that and file that in the courthouse, and after forty-five days, they can get their retainage provided. We don't have any, um, other issues we wanna take it. It essentially starts their warranty period, so we recommend that y'all award activity.
Return motion.
Uh, yeah.
Start with the motion.
Second.
Yeah, second, vote.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Gordon?
Yes.
Ms. Hubble?
Yes.
Ms. Lacy? Yes. Mr. Revere?
Yes.
What's your fastest?
All right, item number nine, consider approving a pay application to Champs Electric for work done on the pump station generator, uh, twenty-seven thousand, nine hundred and twenty-four dollars and thirty-five cents. Mr. Thomas?
Uh, yes, this is, um, actually, they gave me this pay app right after the committee meeting, um, but it is a legitimate pay app, and they, just like the roadway project, are, um, substantially complete, so we do recommend payment of the twenty-seven thousand, nine twenty-four, thirty-five to shoot some electric. Of course, those are the folks who actually, um, live in their office.
Move. Motion by Mr. Revere.
Second.
Second by Mr. Hubble. Vote.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Gordon?
Yes.
Ms. Hubble?
Yes.
Ms. Lacy?
Yes. Yes.
Come back.
All right, item number ten, consider approving substantial completion for the pump station generator project, Mr. Thomas?
Uh, again, this, they are substantially complete, we've tested all the generators, they essentially, I don't know if y'all have your generators on a maintenance program or, or what, but, uh, if you have, if we have a hurricane, uh, hopefully not, you do have a generator pretty much on all of your major stations and the wastewater treatment plant. So, we do recommend that y'all, uh, award substantial.
Make a kind of motion. Mr. Revere's, make motion. Second.
Second.
All right, we have second. Vote.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Gordon?
Yes.
Ms. Hubble?
Yes.
Ms. Lacy? Yes.
Yes.
What's your fastest?
All right, y'all. Uh, item number eleven, consider approving a pay application to J E G, the third construction, in the amount of one hundred and sixty-six thousand, five hundred dollars for work on the railroad devastation project, Mr. Thomas?
Uh, yes, uh, this is the one that's, um, essentially, they're complete, but unfortunately, the pump they put in is discharging into, uh, I'm sure y'all see all the back o's and track o's in front of the lift station on L A One. Um, till that manhole gets put in, uh, they can't test the pump, but they do, uh, their pay app is correct, and we do recommend the payment in the one sixty-six, five hundred.
So, Tony, what was the timeframe on?
Uh, there's, I literally spoke to the contractor, what happened, um, and it's, um, you know, Spinks Construction is preparing the manhole, and essentially, the manhole itself had collapsed, it was an old brick manhole, and he dug it up, and, you know, and ordered another manhole, and he starts to sit it in, and both sides of the manhole are concrete pipes, which, of course, you know, use a sewer, and so they essentially were too crumbly for him to even connect to, so, he's replacing those two pipes, putting the manhole, and it should be all done before the end of the week, and then the, uh, pump station contractor can literally try his pump. So, I guess what I'd do, uh, I'd recommend the, the payment of the, uh, approval of the pay app of one sixty-six, five hundred, but on the substantial completion, I, I would just put a caveat and say, since, uh, we, you know, y'all approved substantial completion, provided he can show the pump operates. Because it's not only fair to him, you know, I mean, he was ready to start the pump a month ago, so, it's not really his, you know, fault. So, the pay app will be the first step.
So, you, I'm sorry, so you think the basic completion of the whole project would be, like...
I, I'm hoping next week. If he can test the pump next weekend, it works, then all that's done, then, you know, we can move on to the next. Hopefully, no, hopefully we'll make it through, uh, Labor Day without any issues. But, uh, as you can see, we're closing out a couple, uh, fairly substantial projects, so it's good, we're getting there.
And when he ran into that, did it cost the city anything extra, uh, how much extra did it cost us?
You know what, the problem is, right now, it's kinda like time and materials, because he didn't know he was gonna find it, you know, and so what'll have to happen is he'll have to present basically a meeting to review the cost of the pipe and the cost of his labor when he started working on that property.
Was that not included in the one sixty-six?
Oh, no, that, that, the one, the contractor doing the one sixty-six, all his work was inside the pump station. He really isn't a, a outside deep sewer guy, so Trey Spinks has worked on a lot of y'all's jobs on the deep sewer, and so, we got him to come in and do that other work.
Can I move on one sixty-six, five hundred?
Motion. Second, second by Mr. Hubble. Vote.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Gordon?
Yes.
Ms. Hubble?
Yes.
Ms. Lacy? Yes. Mr. Revere?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, all right, item number twelve, consider approving a substantial completion for the railroad devastation project, Mr. Thomas?
And again, uh, I would approve it, but just approve it with the thing of contingent that the, um, the pump is, uh, you know, passed test, is tested appropriately. So, basically, they, they don't have to wait till the next council meeting, y'all, if, uh, if he can show that it works, then we'll give him substantial, or authorize the mayor to give him substantial.
So, and just by Tony voicing contingent, that, that suffice?
And I did mention it in the committee meeting that we needed to do it that way.
You're gonna offer the substantial completion?
Yes.
Yeah. In other words, not authorizing the mayor to sign it until the, the pump is tested and shows that it's working. So, in other words, it's contingent upon the pump working.
So, the motion is to contingently...
Approve substantial completion.
Pending the test of the pump.
Right, correct.
So, we're just not gonna sign the documentation to verify.
Right, right. Quite frankly, that whole frame is there.
Yeah, that was, that's, that's a perfect design.
Okay. Move.
Not second.
Uh, yeah, motion second, Mr. Revere's motion, Gordon's second, vote.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Gordon?
Yes.
Ms. Hubble?
Yes.
Mr. Revere?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Lacy?
Yes.
Move ahead.
All right.
Wait, Mr. Tony, why I have to answer this?
Yes.
But we always have to, about the property for the sewer, but I know we didn't have to talk and just...
You know, um, there was a couple, uh, pieces of property that the mayor and Mr. Lance asked me to look at, and I looked at them and, you know, just gave the pros and cons. It, they're pretty good from my standpoint, from, um, just a public, uh, thing, because they're kinda like out in the faraway and near plants. You don't obviously want 'em near any kinda, I don't think there's gonna be a big housing development when you got a, you know, petrochemical plant across the street. So, the one in the corner, in my mind, is the, is the most ideal. Um, the issue with it is, um, I wanna say, the access coming to the highway, there was some kind of an issue, so you need to have a road, you need to use one of their roads inside their property, like a Headlands Road or something like that, but, but both of those pieces of property would work. Now, I wouldn't be involved in any costs or anything, or whether or not you have to expropriate it, but, you know, um, we, I will say, of course, those are cane fields in Plaquemine, that's what we did, we stuck it in the middle of a cane field, nobody even, uh, knows there, you know, you had that, you, uh, and that's what you want. You don't want anybody to, whether, you know, if you have owners or anything like that, that's where a plant needs to be.
Especially in a residential neighborhood.
And what, it, you know, in defense, I have no idea, but usually what happens is they build a plant, and they build the residential neighborhood around it, and, you know, it's, just turns into a big mess. Any other questions, y'all?
That's the end.
I appreciate you, Mr. Thomas.
Thank y'all.
Uh, item number thirteen, consider approving a baronship plus for ten sixty-five Michigan Avenue by Bird Company?
I'll make that motion. Discuss the last week.
Yeah, uh, I, I spoke with the mayor, uh, when I was coming into the town, and he was leaving out, uh, from what he's understood, they were supposed to submit some documents to him first, or, you know, a sketch or a flat showing exactly where the boundaries are gonna be. He says that, you know, to acknowledge that has not yet occurred, so we wanna defer this item until next month's meeting.
But he didn't ask them that in the meeting.
To submit a plot?
Yeah, he didn't ask them that in the meeting. He did not. They were sitting right there, with their information right there.
I think they talked about it after.
No, because they got off with me after the meeting.
Okay. I, I don't know, I thought they were talking about it after, I wasn't part of the conversation, but...
Yeah, I mean, no, everybody approved it last week, because we had the, the neighbor to sign off on it.
Yeah, my, my understanding is the neighbor has no objection to it.
Right.
Again, I, I just don't think we have, they have the plaid or the diagram yet, it's, that's what I was told. So, I, I don't know if I wanna defer it to next month.
Yeah, that's fine.
Either Lance, yeah, either the mayor or...
Well, they finished what they done anyway, so...
Right, right, I mean, they've already filled it, but the issue, we're not, this is not holding them up on building anything, they've already built it, so, if, defer it till next month, either the mayor or, or Mr. Joseph will then be able to provide the council more information.
Are you gonna get in touch with the bird and let them know what they need to submit? Okay.
All right, so, uh, number fourteen, consider introducing an ordinance to...
A motion to defer.
To defer to next month's meeting.
I'll make that motion.
Michelle Lee, motion. Mr. Hubble's second. All right, so, uh, number fourteen.
Let me take a vote.
Oh, my bad, my bad.
Mr. Brown?
Yes, go ahead, go ahead.
Ms. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. Hubble?
Yes.
Ms. Lacy? Yes. Mr. Revere?
They're getting a high secret.
Number fourteen, consider introducing an ordinance that increases the carrying fee rate of B M I Way Services, LLC, V D A, for pumping services for bamboo, by four percent from twenty-six dollars and sixteen cent per month to twenty-seven dollars and twenty-one cent per month.
Um, it's, it's a part of the contract, I think y'all have copies of it in your, um, binders, and, uh, but the council does have to approve it, even though it's a part of the contract that it would increase. Uh, so, this is basically, this would be the introduction of the ordinance, um, whether it's approved or not, because we still have to go through a process, and we still would be...
Uh, so, this is basically, this would be the introduction of the ordinance, um, whether it's approved or not, 'cause we still have to go through a process, and we still would be thirty days away on anything, so, whether we introduce the ordinance or not.
I don't see why it hurts anything to introduce it.
Exactly, and then the public will make the, um, comment before you approve it or don't approve.
I'll move.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Todd, I mean, Mr. Revere, second by Ms. Todd, vote please, all right.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Gordon?
Yes.
Ms. Hubble?
Yes.
Ms. Lacy?
Yes.
Mr. Revere?
Yes.
Item fifteen, consider hiring free part-time workers in roads and drainage to tear the Simba twenty-two.
I think he talked about that, uh, at the, um, the committee meeting, and, you know, just to, to keep up the, the area within the city, that's something he's done here every year.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Miss Gordon.
Sir.
Second, Mr. Revere, vote please.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Gordon?
Yes.
Ms. Hubble?
Yes.
Ms. Lacy?
Yes.
Mr. Revere?
Yes.
All right, number sixteen, consider approving the transfer of Traylon Johnson from roads and drainage to leader reader to fill the vacant position at position step grade one oh eight, dash eight.
Make that motion?
Last week, so yeah, we got a motion by the board.
Hey, if you read the letter, it's in, it says one oh seven, so which one is right?
I don't have that memo.
It was in your, it should be your...
No, the number.
Sixteen, this, this item is one oh seven, right now?
Is that Traylon Johnson?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
You got it?
Yeah.
Terrance, you, which is...
It should be one oh seven.
Should be one oh seven?
What we have on here? Well, I make, retract my motion to one oh seven, so, I mean, from one eight to one oh seven?
So, the motion is to approve the recommendation subject to the new position will be at one oh seven, eight?
Eight.
Eight, one oh seven, eight. Right.
All right, so we got a motion on...
I'll say.
Miss Gordon, second, from Mr. Revere, vote please.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Gordon?
Yes.
Ms. Hubble?
Yes.
Ms. Lacy?
Yes.
Mr. Revere?
Yes.
All right, number seventeen, consider hiring Traveon Blakes, Blakes as part-time work in the roads and drainage department at the rate of twelve dollars a hour?
Traveon Clayborne. Wait, the name is Clayborne.
Traveon Clayborne, all right, so...
Is that one of the, um...
Clayborne as part-time.
Is that one of the hot, the hire for the summer, I mean, for December?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so now, it's only two now, you're gonna have to hire, right? It's, um, three total, um, it's Traveon, Clayborne, and Kim Blakes. Um, he has another one, but he couldn't follow, get everything together for him, so he'll be, I guess, put on the agenda for next time.
The, the two of them?
The two, it's Clayborne and Kim Blakes. So, it should be Traveon, Clayborne, and Kim Blakes.
You put that...
You consider both of those, right, what I'm saying?
Yeah, that's in the three part-time workers as previous.
But we only have one name.
So, we really need to consider just one more of those, still three, right?
So, it's... Yeah, yeah, that's the point that Ms. Lacy is bringing up, so the agenda item fifteen, that was the authorization to hire three workers in general, but we're saying in...
In seventeen.
Seventeen, these are the two of the three individuals. So, they're, yeah...
There's still one more to ask.
Yeah, so the prior, yes, yes, you're, you're correct, that prior agenda item was the authorization for three of them, and now you're filling two of those, basically, with these two individuals.
So, do I need to say both of them?
Yeah, yeah, we'll need the motion to include both names.
Okay, it was Traveon Clayborne.
Traveon Clayborne and Kim Blakes.
Kim Blakes.
I'll send the motion.
So, we don't have to go back to fifteen to rectify them, okay?
All right, so, uh, just correct, consider hiring Traveon Clayborne and Kim Blakes as part-time work in the roads and drainage department at a rate of twelve dollars a hour. All right, move. Anytime motion?
Comment the motion?
I'll tell Lisa on twenty-fourth, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, that's fifteen, fifteen, fifteen.
So, like...
So... So, Ms. Charlene, uh, motion?
Yeah, I said, I said.
And if they have a open, nineteen keeps them on, you know? If they have a opening.
Lacy's second, vote please.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Gordon?
Yes.
Ms. Hubble?
Yes.
Ms. Lacy?
Yes.
Mr. Revere?
Yes.
Most passes.
Consider approving a mighty financial report, Mr. Tom Davis.
I did not have the report, uh, in last week, but I have, um, given each of you a copy to show you what percentage is spent, um, per month, and I also wanna say, you all are not necessarily approving the mostly financial report, but you're acknowledging that I've...
Received.
That I've gave you or presented it.
Yeah, I thought that...
Right, so we don't have to take a vote on it?
Okay.
All right, all right.
Thank you.
All right, uh, yeah, thank you. Uh, number nineteen, combination of proceedings, Mr. Alvarez?
Uh, it's done at the time.
All right, number twenty, alcohol and beverage permit? All right, number twenty-one, announcements, of course, honors.
Mr. Roy, any arrangements yet, Mr. Lee?
Arrangements are made, um, of their visitation on Friday evening from four to six at Hall's on Louisiana Avenue, and then it can also be visitation on Monday from eight to ten.
Can you speak in the mic and speak, barely can hear you. Thank you.
It's been rough, we...
I don't know, but we need to hear you.
Um, visitation on Friday will be at Hall's on Louisiana Avenue from four to six, and then again on Monday at Holy Family Catholic Church from eight to ten, and the mass, the funeral mass will be at ten A.M.
So, are y'all's laws?
For us, four to six at Hall Days on Louisiana Avenue, and, and Holy Family, and then the mass is starting at ten o'clock, at Holy Family's family. Thank you, and I'm sorry if I tried to miss. Y'all may move. I'll leave a minute if you need to go.
All right, have any other...
I'll say.
All right, uh, number twenty-two again.